All this meeting to order. First, I'd like to get up and do a pledge of allegiance to the flag, please. It's over here. Our flag, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now we're turning over to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. First, I'd like to welcome everybody here to the presentation room of the high school. This is one of our favorite nights. I believe I speak for the school committee and certainly myself. So, we're going to ask by school for students to get up and if teachers want to join them, that's certainly appropriate, to share some of the community service learning projects that have been embraced across the district this year. As you know, this is something we take seriously across the entire district. So, we will start with Mary D. Stone School with Mrs. Moylan's class.
Thank you. Come on, girls. This is our display, which I hope you have a chance to look at. All these children made these fabulous books in different shapes in my class, and some even on PowerPoint. First graders on PowerPoint inserting pictures, typing their own books. I mean, it's impressive for first grade. Come along, kids. First, we'd like, Sienna, will you come first?
And just to start off, so the project was traveling authors, and all the children at Mary D. Stone write their own books, probably two books per year. And we decided to go on the road with our show. And we got five preschools in town to host us, and we got one bus. And we all squeezed onto the bus and rode around the town. And the children hopped off at one preschool, hopped off at another preschool, hopped off at another preschool, et cetera. Then the bus looped. They came back for the first group, the second group. I mean, it was fun. They were like, on the bus, off the bus, stop the bus, go the bus, the wheels on the bus. Oh, okay. Sienna, so, Sienna here wrote a reflection in Mr. Freino's class about what it was like to visit a preschool and read her very own book. Sienna.
Reading to the Preschoolers. When I got to the preschool, I was afraid. They won't, they wouldn't like my books because I didn't know if they liked spiders or if they liked skates. So, I was nervous because I have, I have never read to preschoolers. When I said the first word, the kid said, "I can't hear." So, I spoke louder and I read, "Yippee."
Thank you. This is Avery Carbono. This is her fantastic book about her mom and her auntie at the beach. And the seagull goes, she spells it, goes "poot," P-O-O-T, on one of the lady's heads. And I told her it was good luck when that happens, and that's the ending of her story. And she shared this book at the Montessori school, which was really neat, that log building. I've never been in there. I've always wanted to go in, so now was my chance. But Avery, maybe, what was your favorite part of the day? Nice and loud. Tell everyone your favorite part of going to all those schools.
When I read to the kids.
Why did you like that so much?
It's fun to read my stories.
Very good. Hop down. We don't want to take too much time. This is Nicholas. Nicholas, you're from whose class? I forgot. Ms. Kobel? Ms. Kobel. He's in my enrichment class in the afternoons. Very bright boy. Nicholas, did writing these books help you grow as a young man at all? How? Tell me. What did you learn from the experience? Did you become more confident with your writing? Are you nervous? What did you learn? I'm going to come back to you in a minute. Step down. It's okay. He's going to think about that for a second. Jordan, you're up. Jordan, what kinds of things did you discuss with your mom in the car today about what happened that day when we went on the bus to all the preschools?
Um, that reading to the preschoolers was fun and that...
Do you think the preschoolers loved your books?
Yeah.
How did you know?
Because they were sitting nice and still.
They were sitting nice and still. Thank you, Jordan. Nicholas. Back up with Nicholas. What did you learn from that experience? All right, let me say another question. Did you have fun making your book?
Yeah.
Yeah? What did Ms. Kobel help you with? What was the favorite part about making the book? Want to talk another time? Okay. Listen, good try. Okay, so, thank you. This is our display. Enjoy it if you have any questions, but I know a lot of people have to attend.
And Mrs. Chase will let us know who the next one is that's coming up.
Our second grade.
Say it aloud because there's no microphone. Say it aloud, okay?
Good evening. My name is Chloe De yet, and I am in a second grade student in Ms. Quercio's class. Three other second graders and I are here tonight to tell you about a special program that took place on Friday, May 24th.
My name is Sidney Mercadopti, and I am in, I am in Mrs. Dunn's class. On that Friday, as part of the second grade's community service learning projects, we invited some of the senior members of our community to come to our school, Mary D. Stone School, to have what we like to call a generation connection.
My name is Cameron Scobie, and I am in Mrs. Gittars' class. When the seniors from the Auburn Senior Center arrived, the second grade proudly sang their Memorial Day songs. From the first song, it was clear that they were touched in their hearts. Some were even seen dabbing their eyes. After we sang, we then went to set up tables with a special guest and shared memories about our childhoods and our school experiences.
Say it aloud, okay? You have a lot to say.
My name is Trevor Fuller, and I am in Ms. Lemire's class. We wrote those memories down on strips of red, white, and blue paper and linked them together in the form of a chain. In just about 15 minutes, we learned so much about one another. It was a fun experience, and as one student named Mallory in Ms. Gittars' room shared, I thought that visiting the seniors was very fun. I learned that people of all ages, like the young and the old, can get along very well. That's exactly what the day was meant to prove. Here's our chain of memories.
And now the kindergarteners from Mary D. Stone.
Hi, my name's Allison Hill from Mary D. Stone School, and I'm here with Zachary DeLuca, Michaela Gillette, and Clara Harrington. And they're going to tell you about our kindergarten community service learning project.
For our communities, for our community service learning projects, we raised money by...
New books.
Buying new books for the Auburn Public Library. We raised the money by walking laps around our playground field.
Good job.
The first thing we had to do was ask for our family to pledge money for each lap we would walk.
Good job.
Then we walked 10 laps around our playground field. Each time we walked one lap, we made a tally on a card so we could keep track of how far we walked.
Good job.
After we walked, we sent our families a bill that told them how much money they owed towards our pledge. Then a... Then the teachers went shopping for new books for the Auburn Public Library. We read some of the books and wrote book reviews about why we liked them and what our favorite parts were. Then...
The teachers.
The teachers typed the book reviews on the library website for...
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 Everyone.
Everyone to see.
And that's it. Thank you.
Next, we have Mrs. Horgan with her some first grade students from Bryn Mawr.
Good evening. We did a school-wide project. Okay, come on.
Hi. Hi, my name is Rocco. I'm in first grade at Bryn Mawr School. Our service learning project was Birthday Wishes.
Birthday Wishes is a nonprofit organization, organization that provides, provides birthday parties for homeless children. Everyone should celebrate birthdays joyfully with family and friends. For two weeks, students at Bryn Mawr collected items used at birthday parties. Some of the items collected were cake mix, frosting, pan, table napkins, party hats, wrapping paper, small toys, party favors. Then students sorted, counted, and graphed all of the items. We had 82 jars of frosting, 63 cake mixes, 37 rolls of wrapping paper, 23 baking pans, 35 packages of napkins, and many, many, many small gifts. Birthday cards were created during art class. These cards will be used by family and friends of the birthday child. Birthday Wishes presented us with a plaque for our involvement with this project. We hope to continue to help Birthday Wishes in the future.
Maybe my little Vanna, see the plaque? Good, okay.
The...
Cornado.
Cornado of Birthday Wishes sent an email to Ms. Chamberlain expressing her gratitude. Ms. Horgan will now read it.
It says... "I was moved to tears when I picked up the donation this morning. The generosity of your community is phenomenal. What a lucky group of children to be living in a community with such big hearts. Yesterday, I picked up five cans of frosting because they were so low. Today, your school donated approximately 50 cans of frosting, among other things. That will supply many parties for months to come. I cannot express how grateful I am to you, the PTO, the principal, the staff, and especially the students. Thank you very much and have a great holiday season."
Now we will like to give you all a cupcake and... Birthday cards. Ready?
Happy birthday. And then you're going to carry the, you're going to carry the cupcakes. You carry what, two hands? I'll carry your card. You carry what, two hands? You let them pick. This one. Okay, here's your birthday card. Is that a birthday?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, buddy. Thanks, guys. Good job.
Give, give. Oh, thanks. What color should I take? I don't know what to think. Well, I was thinking that too. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. You did a great job. And a birthday card too? Thanks. Oh, there will be. Thank you. And now I think we'll turn it over to Mrs. Kozic from Packitrog to introduce who's come to represent.
I'm going to let two of my third grade friends introduce themselves and tell you about our community service learning project and different events we did this year.
Good evening, and thank you for, good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Marka Bjoska.
And my name is Paige Reader. We are third graders at Packitrog Elementary School. We think Packitrog families are very supportive people. We have donated food items and Christmas gifts to Auburn youth and family services. We have written greeting cards to local senior citizens and as well as military personnel far from home. We have participated in a town-wide community cleanup event held in May. We held a Purple Day for Cancer Awareness, which is led by fifth graders at our school. On that day, we raised $160.59 for the Amer- American Cancer Society.
For a large school-wide community service project this year, we decided to read books. We called our project Read to Feed. To help end hunger and poverty, we had our parents, relatives, neighbors, and friends make pledges based on how many minutes or books we read during the month of March. Our donations were sent to the HEFFER Projects. HEFFER International's mission is to work with communities to end hunger, help the poor, and carry, care for the earth. By giving families a helping hand, not just a handout, HEFFER helps families turn their lives of hunger and poverty into lives where they can take care of themselves and hope for a better future.
With gifts of livestock and training, HEFFER Projects help families improve their nutrition and generate income in sustainable ways. HEFFER calls these animal donations "living wounds" because in exchange for, for their livestock and training, families agree to give away one of its animal ba- animals' babies to another family in need. It's called passing on the gift. That makes HEFFER a very important project and one that continues to grow and create an even, an ever-expanding network of hope and peace.
I remember learning about a village that was in a drought. HEFFER donated camels to them instead of cows because cows could not survive in a hot climate.
There was also a family living on top of a mountain. The best animal for their location was bees. They did not sting, but they made sweet, yummy honey to eat and sell.
Learning Center at HEFFER Farms is located in Rutland, Mass.
Hey, that's not too far from Auburn.
That's right. And each program introduces visitors to the farm to the idea that one person make, can make a difference in ending hunger and poverty. Hands-on interacts...
Interactive.
Interactive, a fun, active, are available at HEFFER Farm. It is also a demonstration farm complement with gardens, complete with gardens, animals, including yaks and traditional farm animals such as pigs, goats, and more. This Saturday, June 8th, there is an open house at the farm in Rutland for 10, from 10 o'clock till 2 o'clock. If you attend, you may even get the opportunity to milk a goat.
At Packitrog, we read, we read and read and read to help raise money for HEFFER Project. Our school read over 102,000 minutes over a four-week period. We are the top, we are the two of the top readers in our third grade classes. Our school was able to collect over $200 to help with, with this very important project. That's enough money to buy a water buffalo. HEFFER is a real pay-it-forward program, and we are glad we have the chance to help.
And now to Mrs. Lopez to introduce from Julia Bancroft.
Actually, I'll introduce one of my teachers, new to Auburn this year.
Hello.
Mrs. Pollier, also our community service learning project overseer. And she'll introduce our students.
Yes. Hi, everyone. It's great to have you all here and great to be here. As Mrs. Lopez or Susan Lopez mentioned, my name is Rachel Pollier, and I'm new to Auburn District this year, and I have to say, it's fabulous. Wonderful place, and it's great to hear all the wonderful things that are going on. And so, on behalf of Julia Bancroft, I would like to introduce Kayla and Sage, who are going to share the projects that we did here at Julia Bancroft.
Good afternoon. My name is Kayla Ordman. I am a fifth grader at Julia Bancroft. This year, the Auburn Public Schools focus was strengthening connection through rigor, relevance, and relationships. We at Julia Bancroft focused our community service learning projects around building relationships to help people in our community as well as those in communities around the world. In October, we collected candy and other items to give to our United States veterans. We also wrote letters to soldiers overseas. In November, we had our annual Turkey Trout, which raised over $2,300 to support children in disadvantaged communities in South Africa. This money helped to provide safe drinking water, improve schools, and build orphanages. In December, we had our big community service learning project, which supported the Y Me and Sherry's House. This organization is a place where kids and their families come to receive and support encouragement they need to fight childhood cancer. We supported Sherry's House through the donations of gift cards, non-perishable items, games, and other products. Thank you. I now like to present Sage Davis.
Hi, my name is Sage Davis, and I'm a fourth grader from Julia Bancroft. In addition to what was already presentant, presented, we also raised over $1,300 for the Pennies for Pasta's Pasta Program, which in, which collects pennies, nickels, dimes, and quarters to benefit the Leukemia, Lymphoma Association Society. Finally, most recently, a group of fourth grade students wanted to do something for animals that have no, no homes and have been forgotten. We began making various bead, beaded bracelets. This small idea blossomed into a project where we sold these bracelets during lunch and promoted them as Mother's Day gifts. $203.36 was raised and donate, donated to the Second Chance Animal Shelter. This money will help to provide food, shelter, care, and toys for these forgotten animals. On behalf of the students and, and school community of Julia Bancroft, we were happy to have been able to help many different organizations to, and learned a lot from them in all, in the progress, proceed, process. We, we look forward to continuing to strengthening our relationships within and around our community. Thank you.
And next, we have Mrs. Young representing Auburn Middle School.
So, we had two big projects this year at the middle school. The first one, we had read a memoir by Grace Akala, who's a former child soldier in Uganda. And we actually had her come to the school and speak to the students, and we learned a lot about the war going on there. And so... Carrie, do you want to talk a little bit about what we did?
Well, for our school, what we basically did was we collected books for Africa because those who were captured are less fortunate to have schools and books. So, our whole school gathered together, and we collected tons of books, thousands, as I can say, of books to provide for women and children out there, young and old, of all ages, so they can have the education that we all have. And I just wanted to say that you guys are so lucky to live in, you know, like a world, this part of the world where we are fortunate enough to have books to read and have, you know, electronics and all that to read our books, where we can just open our Kindle or iPad, and we can just read and read and read. And those, they are very determined to read, but they just don't have all that stuff that we do.
And our, our second big project that we did, we learned this year about the Holocaust, and read lots of literature associated with the Holocaust, and read the play, The Diary of Anne Frank. And so, we decided from there to do our next project. Drew, can you want to talk a little bit about that?
We created books of our own, and we walked up to Bryn Mawr Middle School, and we made a field trip, and we read kindergarten and first grade, and we asked them if they understood or if they got to know the books. And they all understood, and they liked them. And we, we got to publish them.
And then Carrie, can you tell a little bit about your experience reading to the kids?
Um, it was awesome to, you know, to be able to read the book to them and just see the smile on their face. And we made illustrations and all of that so they can see. And it was very amazing, actually, because some of the kids... because some of the kids just wanted to grab the book and read it themselves. And it was very fun.
If you want to see, over there, we have a few of the books in the back corner there as well, if you want to take a look at some. Thank you very much.
Before I say anything, I'd like to go to the school committee members and see if they have anything they would like to say.
Let's start with me. Well, I just want to ask all the people that came up to present this evening, who is really kind of nervous about coming up here and talking in front of everybody? And I have to tell you that you would never have known it. You all did such a wonderful job presenting. And it was so apparent that you guys really enjoyed what you did, and you enjoyed the experience. And I guess now you know how easy it is for you to help another person and to keep and continue doing that. And we are so proud of you. This truly is our most favorite evening because we get to see all the wonderful things that you're doing. And we also get to see how you stand up and present. And it says a lot about your teachers and your parents that you could get up here this evening and talk in front of a big group like this, because it's not easy. You all looked very handsome, very beautiful, and I'm just so proud to say that I'm on the school committee representing you. So thank you.
Well, I really can't top that speech. But as Mrs. Griffin said, I'm very, very proud of all of you. You did a really great job. And I love the different, you know, projects that you guys all took on. And I think it opens up some of your eyes into some of the things and how, you know, beneficial it is for where we come from and compared to other places in the world and things. So the fact that you guys are just out there understanding what it's like to help others and participate in things like that. So, you know, kudos to all of you and your teachers and parents as well. But great job by all.
As the lady said, we thank you kids for coming here. You're fantastic. It's always a special night for us because I know a lot of you from the community, from youth sports. I've seen you around baseball and soccer. And it's very special when I see what you're capable of doing here in front of us tonight. And we owe that gratitude for your teachers for getting you to this point, but especially you guys for standing up there. And you make us very proud to represent you, and you make your whole community very proud. And I'm also touched by the way you lend a hand to the people that you were trying to reach out to. And every time you reach out to try to help somebody, that person is probably, there's a good chance that they're going to reach out and try to touch somebody else. So it's like a chain. Every time you do something nice for someone else, there's a good chance they're going to do something nice. And if that was something that we could take on as a community, as a country, and the whole world, that'd be a fantastic thing. But it starts with you guys, and again, I couldn't be more proud of all of you. Thank you very much.
Well, now, they really didn't leave me anything to say. But I would like to congratulate all the children, the teachers, parents. I mean, this is a wonderful thing. This is a caring, community thing that your children are doing, the parents, everybody. I mean, it's just great to come here every year and have you put on this display because it even warms you hot when you think about how even the children are helping people that need help and really need it. And you are willing to work at it. You get up there, you smile, you speak of the things that you're doing. I mean, you can even tell it makes you feel good. And that's what it's about, helping each other. And you kids are tremendous. And I'd like to thank the teachers and the parents, everybody for a great job. Do you want to take a minute or two so you can look at the posters and then let them go?
Sure.
I'd like to take like a two-minute recess if it's all right with the committee to go around and look at the stuff before they leave, and then after that, we'll release you.
You'll be dismissed.
All right, we're going to move on. Good job, committee.
The next item, Marjorie Craver, an Auburn High science teacher, is here this evening to seek your approval. If you remember back a couple of meetings ago, she had come actually last unit this meeting to seek your approval to go to New York City to participate in a Body Worlds tour. The location got changed due to storms this past fall, but Marjorie is here. If you want to just come up and share a little bit about the field trip you hope to take and turn it to the school committee.
So this book here is the Teach for the Education Guide. That gives a little bit more information of what the exhibit is. We went two weeks ago, May 16th, so about two weeks ago, to Body Worlds Pulse. The original exhibit got flooded, so we found another one, happened to be in New York City as well. And you guys, thank you very much. You gave us the approval to go to the new location. So we are seeking the approval, Ms. Kusulik and I, unfortunately, she could not be here this evening, to go again next year. It was a wonderful opportunity, again, we thank you for the experience this year. It's an exhibit with approximately 200 specimens that have been meticulously dissected, most of which are human cadavers to display the human body systems. And it being mostly anatomy students who went, is a great opportunity to see up close and personal what they've been studying this year. We actually dissected the fetal pigs the two weeks prior to where we went, and the comparative anatomy was amazing. It was, I mean, just to see them light up and be like, "Ms. Craver, can you believe that?" I'm like, "I know, guys, it's crazy." So it was a wonderful opportunity, and I really think they got a lot out of it. And as the field trip request form states, we did leave around, and it worked out perfectly. We left around 6:00 AM. It was a long day on the bus, but it worked out. And we got down there around 10:30. Took about two hours in the exhibit, and then they had about an hour to get lunch. We got back on the bus and got back here around 6:30 at night. So it was a long day on the bus, and they all shared that it was well worth it and they loved it. So it's good. We have a few movies on the bus, so it's good.
Can I ask a question? Ms. Craver, you said it was mostly anatomy students. So who is eligible to go on a field trip?
So we opened it up to all of my anatomy students and all of Ms. Kusulik's AP Bio students this year. Next year, because of the numbers, we might be able to open it up to more students because I don't have as many anatomy students in my section. So it might be opened up to Bio students, but it was mostly a first-come, first-served basis. So we did do one full coach box. So it was about, it was 50 students with five chaperones.
And once again, you're, I say it every time, it amazes me how many teachers are willing to go and do things extra for the kids. And you've been here now twice in the last two school committee meetings asking to do something worthwhile for the kids. So I appreciate it. Thanks.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's quite right. I'm going to have you sign that in Jeff's absence. And do you want to go back to the minutes?
Yes. Do you have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Thank you.
The, will we continue?
Right.
Okay, so the next item to share with you, the Bryn Mawr School Library actually received donations from a group of family members totaling $250. Mrs. Chamberlain has, in anticipation of your approval, sent a thank-you note to them. It was extremely generous of them to do that and will support our libraries. So it is my recommendation that you approve them with gratitude.
I'll make the motion to approve with gratitude the donation for the Bryn Mawr Library in the amount of $250.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
The next item, just to keep you apprised, the FY13 Grant Update. We regularly provide these to you, but I do want to thank, there are a number of people who write these grants, some being grants that actually are competitive that we seek out. They total $838,069, and they do a tremendous amount in supporting the operational budget that is supported by the taxpayers of Auburn. So just wanted to make you aware of these. We are in the process now, this shows balances as of May 24th, of expending all of them. Some of them have expirations of June 30th and several others of August 31st. So all grant funds will be spent.
Could you just elaborate on exactly, not exactly who is writing the grants, but from what departments?
Sure.
Is it guidance? Is it social studies? Is it everyone?
Sure. So with the listing there, I'll just point out the second one first, the IDEA Grant. That's the special education referred to as the 240 Grant. That's written by Mr. Campbell, the Director of Pupil Services. Dr. Lozay writes the first grant there, the Title I Grant, the Race to the Top, and the Teacher Quality Grant. There was a team from the middle school who wrote the STEM School Grant for $25,000. Early Childhood Grant is generally written by Mr. Campbell and Mrs. Chase. It funds, helps supports our preschool program. The Sped Program Improvement Grant, the 274, that's actually for professional development. That one was written by Dr. Lozay with input from Mr. Campbell. The Yellow School Bus Grants were written by Mrs. Chamberlain and Mrs. Lopez. Academic Support is written by Mr. Handfield. The Early Childhood Program Improvement, Dr. Lozay headed that. Mrs. Chase and Mr. Campbell had input as well. And then the Chamber Grants were written by teachers from across the district.
Wow, that was excellent.
Lots of people doing that, absolutely. The next item, in keeping with scholarship announcements, I do want to share with you the Auburn Police Association honored students, or recognized students, I should say, for their academic excellence. Those students being Stephen St. Jean, Zachary Clifford, Gabriella Laurie, Kyle Langer, and Nicholas Stanton. Many of those were read either at the graduation last week or at the earlier, the class day event during the day. So we thank the Police Association for their continued generosity of our students. Also, the Auburn Rotary Scholarship, to announce those. Rachel Lang, and then received $1,000 and $4,500 scholarships. Went to Margaret Looney, Maria Coughlin, Luke Funberg, and Jamie Bailey. And I would just like to send sincere appreciation to all of the numerous scholarships that are awarded, whether they are from private organizations, some are family trusts, some are in memory of lost family or friends. But as you announced at the graduation, it was over $85,000 that was awarded to our students, and that's through the tremendous generosity of the Auburn community. So they certainly give back to us, and I think the presentations tonight show that it's a reciprocal relationship. So very generous. Sharing with you, and this will continue to be updated, the announcement of retirements and those who may be resigning or otherwise moving on, as well as new positions. So at our next meeting, even since this was printed, we have been able to secure someone else. In fact, I met with someone earlier this afternoon. Erica Bush will be joining as grade seven ELA teacher in place of Mrs. Pombo, who is retiring. But as announced at the high school graduation, Mrs. Deepa Squally is retiring after near, I think, 39 years of service to the district. Rose Fournier is retiring as one of the school psychologists. Chris Pombo from the middle school. Marie Ricard from the Packard School, grade five. Ginger Minor, the secretary from the middle school as well. So as we continue to, we will share these with you. And we did, I'm happy to report, have some transfers that took place across the district. I think it's a very healthy thing for people to do, to experience. Obviously, they have to be certified, but different areas of the district.
I'd like to thank all the retirees for their service to the Auburn schools and just wish them a happy and healthy retirement. And for those who are transferring, just to say that we appreciate them, you know, making that move where they might be needed a little bit more and make room for someone else. Appreciate that. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair. Last year, actually, I had drafted a letter to the retirees thanking them for their service. And if it's the will of the committee, I would be happy to do that again. And the timing of it, I would be able to actually bring it to the next meeting for you to sign, and then we could still give it to them before school's out, if you'd like.
Anybody else out there?
Okay, great. The School Building Committee, there are two appointments that were school committee appointments. There were some from the Board of Selectment, which Ms. Jacobson is taking care of. I spoke with her earlier today. Both Mr. Emzie and Mr. Bowden have expressed their interest in staying on. So it is my recommendation that you reappoint each for a three-year period.
I'll make the motion to appoint both Mr. Mark Emzie and Mr. Lon Bowden to the SBC for another three-year term.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
And once notified, Mrs. Gabriel will send each a letter. They'll have seven days within which to go in and get sworn in by Mrs. Gabriel. As we typically do, I'm just keeping you updated in terms of projections for next year with anticipated class sizes at the elementary schools. We do continue to have a small bubble at Bryn Mawr School. As you know, you've approved an additional third-grade teacher to join the Julia Bancroft team to address those issues. So we'll continue to keep you apprised. Oftentimes during the summer, there are students who withdraw and then others who register. So there's likely to be a fluctuation, but I'll keep you apprised.
Can I ask a question, please? The Bryn Mawr second grade?
Mm-hmm.
You have almost no room there.
Mm-hmm.
So do you feel like you want to wait? Or should we get a fifth teacher in there so that you can start looking for that person now?
Let me confer with Mrs. Chamberlain on that issue. We actually spoke about it earlier today at the leadership team meeting, this very concern around these numbers. So let me get a sense from her, and I'll bring back a recommendation on June 19th.
Little Chair. Are we also offering the option that we were last year for the students to switch to another school? Is that still a possibility?
We actually, we did that last year at kindergarten. I think that, and we could certainly do that. I think, though, one of the challenges is once students have been with a group of students for now, it would be two years, it's likely, less likely. We could certainly try to do that. One of the greatest challenges, quite honestly, that we have at Bryn Mawr School is space. We do not currently have a space, nor really can I think of a space that we could even turn into a classroom. So that's one of the concerns. We are very locked. But I will speak with both Mrs. Chase and Mrs. Chamberlain because it would impact the Mary D. Stone School. As well as you can see, Mary D.'s, and just the way that it runs, they have five students left in each of their classes.
And if I may, another possibility that we've done in the past, and I'm assuming that you would think of this as well, is if they need aids in those classes as opposed to if there's no room for a second teacher.
Right.
I'm sorry, a fifth teacher.
Exactly. That was part of the discussion that we had today. So I will continue that and bring a recommendation back on June 19th.
And the only reason I bring it up is because I would be glad to support any one of those ideas.
Okay. Thank you. I do have a brief update that I'm going to show here on the PowerPoint just so you have something to look at. And I believe you've got a copy in your packet, too. Just to keep you apprised, I'd like to give you briefly some information regarding PARC, which is an acronym for the Partnership for the Advancement of College and Career Ready. And this PowerPoint has been pieced together. Actually, I don't know if the projector is on.
I don't believe so.
Well, there's a light on there.
Oh, is there?
Well, why don't we do, if it's okay with you, I don't see the clicker to turn it on. What I'd like to do is, you have the copy in front of you, and I will go through it there. And this will be posted to the website for anybody who would like to see it. So as I said, PARC is the Partnership for Assessment, I should say, of readiness for college and careers. And this is the assessment that actually ties in with the Common Core State Standards. I think it was probably last year or so at this time when I shared with you that Massachusetts was one of 21 states that actually participated or decided to join the Common Core State Standards and accept those. So that actually happened back in 2011. There's a map that shows the 21 states, Massachusetts being There's a map that shows the 21 states, Massachusetts being one of them. PARC, and if you remember back when I did the original presentation on the MCAS, there was, on the, on the Common Core State Standards, there was questions around, would we still continue with MCAS, the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System that's been in place? And the thinking at that time was, yes, likely, although there may need to be some tweaks. What we have here before us tonight is, although this, the state has not yet voted in favor of going with PARC, all indications are, is that they're going to. I was just at a superintendent's conference back on May 23rd, and there was a representative from the Mass Department of Ed there, as well as Jeff Nellhouse, who used to be with the Department of Ed. He's down now in, down in Washington now, and he's actually leading this for the 21 consortium states. And what the gentleman said from Desi is that they're not going to agree to switch to MCAS for the ELAs in math only. That's what Common Core is, for English, Language Arts, and Math Only, until they are assured that the PARC assessment is as good or better than the MCAS test. But, I will tell you, as I go through here, they are planning for an implementation in the 14-15 school year, with some field testing next year. So I would say that all indications are, they will be going in this direction. So the priorities of PARC, I won't read through these for you, but the intention is to measure the extent that the standards and the Common Core State Standards are mastered at the various grade levels, to provide educators with data. One of the switches in this is that MCAS data generally comes at the very end of one year, or even in the summer after the year has ended. With PARC, the intention, and you'll see in a moment, it is intended to be administered via technology, which is actually presenting a challenge for many districts, including Auburn. But, we would actually get the data much more quickly, which makes sense, and we could even have some diagnostic data during the middle part of the year that we'd be able to use. That's an additional feature of it. One of the other goals of it is to determine whether students are college and career ready or on track. In order for a student to graduate high school with a diploma, he or she would need to earn, reach at least level four, excuse me, of a five-level standard in order to, to reach, to earn his or her diploma. Currently, right now, students have to pass the MCAS. They take it in grade 10, they have opportunities to retake it in grades 11 and 12. In order, even if they meet the local graduation requirements, they still have to pass MCAS to graduate. Excuse me. So this would in fact replace that for ELA and math only. It measures, as indicated here, the full range of student performance. It provides, as MCAS does, accommodations for low achieving students, particularly our special education students. The biggest difference, I would say, is that it uses technology to deliver the test. Technology is a tool that our students use regularly, and as Mr. Nellhouse said in his presentation on the 23rd, while they will make paper and pencil copies available during the early years of administration, you'll see in some of these, there's an example I included in here, that I believe it will put our students at a disadvantage if they don't have the technology. I apologize. Excuse me. And their anticipation is that will be both affordable and sustainable. School districts, as you know, currently do not pay for MCAS. That's an expense that's borne by Desi. There will be two pieces to the PARC assessment system, both the summative assessment, as well as the optional assessments. And those are the ones that indicated, the optional ones, that would be mid-year and be diagnostic. Utilizing technology, the results would come back very quickly. That would be additional data that would be in teachers' hands, that they would be able to use in order to differentiate the instruction that they provide to their students. So at each grade level, there would be three tasks, a research tasks, a research simulation task, a literature analysis task, and a narrative writing task, and this is for the ELA portion only. So in the tasks would require, so students would read one or more passages, fairly typical of what they would do now in our assessments, one of which would be a multimedia stimulus. So there may be a video. And that's the piece that I think that could present a, put students at a disadvantage if they're taking a paper and pencil test, as opposed to having a colored video or book that they're looking at. Obviously, you can't replicate that on paper and pencil. They would need to answer short answer reading comprehension questions. Again, those continue to be a focus in the assessments they take now. And they would be expected to write extended responses to prompts that require them to provide evidence, going back into the text, and that's a focus area that we're focusing with our students, to always go back and find the evidence that supports your response or your statement. So here's a quick sample for the narrative writing task. This is an excerpt from Julie of the Wolves by Jean Craighead George. And the piece that I did not include, because it was very similar, in fact, you'd see it on a typical MCAS, it had actual questions with a multiple choice, much as that one noted there in Part A does. So that would actually be easily to replicate on paper and pencil. When you get to Part B, though, it says in here, "Find a sentence in the passage which details, with details, that support your response to Part A. Click on that sentence and drag and drop it in the box." So, amongst us that have been reviewing this information, I mean, obviously, it is in a sense testing students' technological skills, because in order to be able to go into a passage, click on it, copy it, and drag it into a box, will require a certain amount of finesse that I think our students are certainly well equipped to do. It would be a much easier way of doing it than for a student to go in on paper and pencil and to write the response out. And then number C, again, finding a detail that supports, and clicking and dragging it into the box. So in terms of the number of sessions, this is a concern, obviously. We want to be sure that we have ample time to teach the students and not simply be testing them. So what it has broken down here, for ELA, the performance-based assessment would be three sessions, and what they've indicated is, they would be approximately an hour in length. And the MCAS currently, right now, is not a timed test, so students do have ample time to finish if they require it, or if they have an accommodation written into an Ed Plan or 504. What they've noted here is that it would be a fixed amount of additional time, not specifying yet exactly what that would look like, but there could be some additional time, so it's not a strict timed test. In terms of math, there would be, I mean, excuse me, the end-of-year assessments, there would be two in ELA and two in math. The goal would be that the performance-based assessments, they'd open up a window for 20 days. So those would happen in the early spring, likely in March or so, intended to be around at the 75% mark of a student's school year, and then the end-of-year assessments happening at the 90% mark, which is approximately in May. So at this presentation that I attended with other area superintendents, they switched, so that was the, the global perspective across the country that Jeff Nellhouse presented, and then a representative from Desi spoke in terms of how is this going to impact Massachusetts. So the graph shows that there's been tremendous progress, I think we could say, that since in 1998, and this is based on 10th graders, MCAS in ELA, 38% of them scored at proficient or higher, and now in 2012, 88% do the same. In terms of the math, 24% back in 1998, with 78% currently considered to be passing, or proficient or higher on the MCAS. But despite those significant increases, challenges do remain. We have achievement gaps between some of our subgroups of students, and even though graduation rates are at an all-time high, and dropout rates are at the lowest in decades, not all of our students, and this is statistically across the Commonwealth and across, I would say, the country and beyond, that students don't all graduate ready to enter college in credit-bearing courses. They oftentimes may have to take remedial courses. And students would actually take what's called the Accuplacer course to determine what courses they would need to take in college. The intention is that a particular score on PARC would eliminate the need to take Accuplacer, and would eliminate the need to take any non-credit-bearing courses in college. So they're really trying to build that continuum from pre-K right through higher education. Back when the Common Core State Standards were first developed and approved, so back in 2011, the belief was that this would transition us to a new, more rigorous set of standards, and I think that there are some out there who may argue that point, or believe that perhaps it is yet to be seen. But we are in the process of implementing the Common Core State Standards. Dr. Lozay has reported on that. This school year was intended to be near full implementation, with next year being full implementation being the expectation, and we will be ready for that. Again, it's in ELA and mathematics. One of the key shifts, it, the PARC, the Common Core State Standards, provide a better balance between literary, fiction, and informational text. Where MCAS was probably heavy with the literary, the Common Core State Standards really does weave in considerable requirements around informational text. There's reading, writing, and speaking, always looking for evidence, finding multiple audiences, writing to different sources, and then really implementing reading complex text with academic language. So the key shifts in terms of mathematics, and this I had shared with you back in a PowerPoint well over a year ago now, is that each grade in math focuses on fewer standards. The idea is, rather than to go in great breadth of different standards, to look at a smaller number and go in greater depth with those. So certainly that is, and we've, the teachers and under Dr. Lozay's guidance have really been embracing the standards and making sure that we're bringing them to our students. The Science and Technology Engineering Test, that would continue to be assessed through MCAS, because Common Core only addresses ELA and math. And they did announce this day, if you remember, several years ago, it was anticipated that an MCAS history test would be published, but that was suspended back in 2009, and it has not been resumed yet, although they did state that day that they anticipate bringing that onboard at some point, date undetermined at this point. According to the representative that stated here, they believe that PARC assessments will improve upon current MCAS, and I would agree with this, that it's going to give teachers feedback far sooner on progress during and throughout the year, allowing for the instructional adjustments. We do a lot of data collecting at our grade levels now and use that data, but this would actually provide a standardized system of collecting information. It would provide, obviously, information to parents and students of whether they were meeting expectations, and that would be on top of our local expectations, and be honored by higher education. Again, I had said about the Accuplacer, this would actually replace that for placement purposes when students go to college. This is the issue that I will tell you is of concern for districts. I had Mr. Bouvier do an analysis, and we've added tremendous technology to the Auburn Public Schools over the past five years. But what this would require, so say, what the expectations are, is that at the middle school, so if sixth grade was going to be doing their ELA in math test within a 20-day window, we have to have enough technology to be able to test all of one grade, so all of the sixth-grade students at the same time. Otherwise, there's the fear that students would tell each other the questions. So, that amounts to about 200 pieces of technology just at the middle school that we would need just for sixth grade. Now, obviously, the kids can share it. Right now, and they continue to put out guidance, the most recent one was in February, so based on our system we run most, most regularly is XP. If XP continues to, if that platform will run this program, we should be in okay shape, but there are some questions of whether that's going to still remain. There was a question regarding iPads. The iPad minis will not run this system. The full iPads that run more, like about $600, will do this. So I share this with you because I wanted you to know that as we plan our budget, as we prepare our CIP for technology, we've got to be paying attention to this, because I really do believe that if our students in the 14-15 school year don't have the appropriate technology to take this with, that they're going to make an accommodation, I've not yet seen what that's going to look like. I think it will disadvantage children. I will tell you, among superintendents, we are in good shape, I think, in Auburn technologically. There are many communities that worry how they would ever be able to do this. So, I can tell you that the Department of Ed and even the federal group, PARC, Jeff Nellhouse is coordinating this, is very aware of that situation. They actually, as noted on here, Desi is working with the SBA, the MSBA, to increase our access, or districts' access to digital learning and assessment, so to perhaps have grant programs that schools could actually, with some participation, the middle school project they're participating for us at 58.61%, all of those specifics are yet undetermined, but there might be some grant funding that could potentially be available. But as noted here, the paper and pencil version will be available, and it says at additional cost, that will not be at additional cost to the school district, so far as I know, but it would seem that it would be borne by Desi.
Yeah, just through the chair, just a little comment there. You know, you'd think, if they're starting to implement this, that the powers that be would, would reach out to some of these computer companies and stuff, and, you know, how we have the, you know, the French Coalition and stuff like that.
Yeah.
You would think that somebody would be willing to, you know, negotiate something, if, you know.
Right.
You haven't heard anything?
No, and you know, I, I think that there was an expectation that perhaps, you know, based on the powers of scale, that if they were to negotiate with, you know, an Apple for iPads, or, you know, HP, that there's a belief that perhaps there could be a reduction in price. It would seem that would make sense, but I've got no official notification on that at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the final slide really shows the timeline here. So the school year 12-13 is currently nearing its close, and remember that this PARC timeline goes across 21 different states. They did announce on the 23rd of May that they will be looking, or actually inviting some school districts to participate in a field test or a pilot test, and I would certainly welcome that opportunity in Auburn. It would give us an opportunity to see it firsthand. We do actually have a teacher who participates on the PARC Development Committee. She does some work with Desi, and has shared with us what she can, which, the information that's not embargoed. But the initial administration of PARC is anticipated for the school year 14-15, and that during the summer of 15, because they need a, enough data from the 14-15 in order to set the achievement levels and the college-ready performances, so likely they would not be reporting out in that first year. Would really be more for their setting of achievement levels.
Okay, so, looking at this timeline then, we have, because we've already set our budget for next year.
Correct.
So, we really only have that, the next budget cycle to figure out how we're going to get all of this.
Correct.
Equipment.
Yeah.
So, what is your plan? I mean, I don't want to sit here and say what I think you should bring back to us.
Yeah.
What is your, what is your plan to inform us?
The plan is, Mr. Bouvier is using their guidance, we're waiting for that to be updated. We're hoping that the iPad information will get, will be more favorable, because we've purchased a number of iPads in the district. We are looking to use our CIP money that was just recently approved, very strategically, to be able to purchase this. And once I have a better sense, I will come back with you and share that. But I would anticipate we're going to either need to increase, do some shifts in our CIP for next year, or look to add some money into the budget for some technology purchases, so our students are ready to have all the tools at their hands.
So, so it's, to me, it's, this is such an urgent matter that we, because I'm, I'm looking at school year 2014-15.
Yeah.
And I imagine if we didn't have the equipment that we needed.
Mm-hmm.
And so now we have to have some of our students, or many of our students, using the paper version.
Right.
We have kids in this community who have so much potential. How terrible would it be if they were at a disadvantage because we didn't have the appropriate equipment for them to use?
Right.
That is, to me, horrific.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you could, and, and again, it, with the, if everybody agrees, I would like to see some sort of, and I'm sure that that's what you're bringing forward to us, some sort of plan as to how we are going to get this equipment moving forward, and I don't mean in the next school committee meeting, but we, this is an urgent matter, as I know you realize, but I'm.
Agreed.
I'm very worried about that.
No, I appreciate, I am, and I appreciate your support, and that's really why I wanted to bring this to you. I know that I certainly didn't through this have all the answers, in fact, I don't think they have all the answers yet. But the technological piece, I really wanted to bring to your attention, because it is something that we will not be able to correct, or something that we will not be able to correct or supplement in a six-month period. It's going to be something over time that we'll do. So Mr. Bouvier is putting that together, and I will be definitely sharing that with you.
Thank you.
George, I would ask that we approach our local representation and ask legislation, ask legislators where we're supposed to get the money, like we often do with unfunded mandates.
Right.
Because this is just another one of those situations, and I'm not saying that it's good or bad. It seems like it may actually be a good idea, getting the technology, getting them involved in technology at the same time as they're taking the tests. And the Accuplacer, it all seems to fit great.
Right.
But, as Liz said, it's two years away. They've come up with this fantastic plan, as they always do, and put the cart in front of the horse once again, not giving us ample time for planning. So I would ask that we at least put a letter together and kind of ask them, where do they expect us to come up with this money?
Great.
Because we're still working on some of the other unfunded stuff.
Right. I would be happy to draft a letter and bring it at the June 19th meeting for your review and hopeful signature. I actually have a letter I'm going to pass out to you tonight in response to a letter that was recently sent, but I think that makes good sense to share that.
I'm not confident that it will go anywhere, but I think it's still going to be on our laps when it comes down to it. And then we'll really have to work together, as you say, to get a plan.
Yep.
To plan ahead for what seems like right around the corner.
It will be.
But it's worth a try.
You know, it's, it's a situation like, you know, George was saying, is it may be a great test, but when it comes down to it, the results, how terrible would it be if the results were swayed between the haves and have-nots? It's just not right.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I agree, if we can find out how they plan on helping those communities, including ours, that need that help.
I agree.
That's a very good point, Liz, because I feel strongly that we will be there, we will be ready no matter what.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
But that doesn't go for all the communities.
Right. I concur with that concern, and I will say that, you know, in this presentation, one of the opening remarks was, you know, not to worry, because obviously people have been clamoring about this when it first came out, there will be a paper and pencil test, but I strongly encourage districts to have the technologically available, technology available for it. So by that statement is saying, you know, technology is the way that, I mean, it's a test being designed to be taken on a computer or an iPad. It changes when it's not.
I think now is a good time to send that letter, too.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
This is the time to do it.
Right, I will draft that.
I do have a question for the chair. Dr. Brunel, on the, the first year, the pilot and the field testing?
Yes.
Do you need a motion from us to, because I concur with you on that.
Yeah.
I think it would be great if we can jump in the beginning of this. Do you need for us, or is that something you can just?
They're going to invite us. There's no way for us to volunteer for it.
Oh, you can't volunteer for it?
Because some had said to volunteer, and it's going to be, just as when they do the NAEP testing, the National Assessment of Educational Progress, we get a letter that says, "You've been invited, you're fourth grade here," and it will actually, it won't be a whole grade. If they say choose a fourth grade class, it will be a fourth grade class at back of a chug school. So we, there isn't even that option, because I had already thought to.
You can express your interest, huh?
No, no, did try.
If you could send a video of what we saw tonight, perhaps that would sway them, because we have fantastic students.
We do, we do.
All right.
Thanks.
School Building Committee update?
I think we did that. That was for Mr. Emzie and Mr. Bowden's appointment, unless you want to report.
Okay.
On the last SBC meeting, okay?
Well, you said that there was a meeting of the School Building Committee, oh, schedule, I'm sorry, that said scheduled, never mind.
No, we actually did have one on May 28th, last Tuesday, and looked at the revised schedule going forward, as we knew all along it was going to be an aggressive schedule, and rarely shared that information. Lamora Pagano gave an update, so we are on, as I think they had said that night, the fast track with all of this. But again, expressed appreciation to the entire Auburn community, where we're thrilled and excited to be moving forward. In terms of the press box, hopefully you saw it this evening when you came, the beautiful cupola built by the students at Bay Path was hoisted just last Thursday when I was here. KG Sign donated their time to hoist that, and hopefully in Friday's TNG, Ellie Olsen has some pictures and is intending to write a story. So it was really a great collaborative effort between the DPW, the Facility Management Division of the DPW, there was Johnson Engineering, the Press Box Committee Subcommittee has worked for a long time, Bay Path has been tremendous, KG Sign, obviously, and it's coming to fruition and nearing completion.
Finally.
Thank you.
I would like to ask that, that we either have some of these people who were instrumental in having this done come in here so we can personally thank them, or at the very least, if that wasn't their wish to come in. And I'm talking about the carpenters from the town, all the way down. I'm sure there's some names missing from here, and I appreciate all the work of Mr. Fay, Mr. Coyle, but I'm referring to some of the people beneath them who are actually banging the nails, not the students, but the guys from town.
Sure.
Who kind of went above and beyond and got that thing done.
I'd be happy to. I will tell you, I just drafted a note of thanks to Bay Path. I wanted to get it to them so the students could see it and the teachers before school is out. We do have a plaque that we're intending to put up, but I would be happy to extend an invitation to them. I can tell you Jimmy and Caleb from the Facility Management Department of DPW have done a tremendous job. I drove by today and waved to, I'm quite sure it was Caleb up there. And the photos I can send to you of it being hoisted on was, was great, really, really nice.
The name that you just mentioned, what was it, Jimmy?
Jimmy and Caleb. They're from the, yeah, they're from the Facility Department of the DPW.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everyone who had a part in, including those gentlemen who are part of the Public Works Department are recognized.
Absolutely.
Because we really do appreciate their work.
I agree. And the local cable committee has been tremendously generous. So I will get a list to be sure that people are invited. And then finally, the listing of the colleges and universities that was included in the graduation program. But I also do want to let you know in my communication with Adam Minor, the editor of the Auburn News, actually, every home in Auburn, not for Friday's edition, but next Friday's edition on June 14th, they're going to be doing there free. It goes to every home, and that's where they're going to feature the high school graduation, and it's got my article in there about it and lists all the colleges and universities. So it will go to every home in Auburn, which is, which is great. So it's delayed a week, but purposefully so.
Yeah, that's great.
And then the upcoming events, happy to report that the middle school is in Washington, DC. They actually arrived yesterday safely, ahead of schedule, had time to visit the Capitol Building when Mr. Gagnon called in to report, and all continues to go well, and they're having a great time. I don't remember what the weather was today. I know that yesterday was a, was a great day. We've got our end-of-year concerts through the Fine Arts Department, our spree days, always much anticipated events. And then a week from Friday is the Mini Relay for Life here at the high school, for the middle school and high school students, and there are a number of end-of-year events. And I do want to extend an invitation to all of you to the middle school graduation that will be held here in the auditorium at 10:00. It's the same day as our next, next meeting.
Through the chair, if I may ask, did we not talk about last year? I think I brought it up last year about, about changing the middle school graduation to an evening program instead of the daytime.
Mm.
And I don't remember, I don't recall why, why it's done during the day and not done at night.
A couple of reasons, I think. You did bring it up last year, and that was shared with Mr. Gagnon, and they actually discussed it as a team. And I think for a couple of reasons. One, they want to be sure that it's different from the high school graduation. They do it up here in the auditorium. I will tell you, it, the, it will be packed in the auditorium, including the balcony. So families are able to do that. They really wait to do it until the very close of school. It's a special day for the eighth graders. Sometimes their families take them home that afternoon for lunch and stuff, so it doesn't appear to be any issue, and that's really Mr. Gagnon's, yeah, preference on that.
I just don't want them to feel like that we're slighting them, because I would, I would very much like to be a part of that ceremony.
Yep, yep.
And unfortunately, you know, working during the day, it's just not, it's just not feasible. So I just don't want the, you know, the middle school graduates to feel that, you know, that we're there for the high school but not for them. That's not the case.
Right.
Right, you're right, you do have the job.
You know.
I would be hap, oops, sorry, to, to express that to Mr. Gagnon, so they know.
Maybe just in thought, you know, maybe just, you know, just a quick in thought, you know, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not looking for kudos or anything, I just don't want them to think that, you know, we go to the high school and we go to middle school, you know?
Yeah, and you know something, I totally, what I was always worried about is could parents get off from work? But I do understand what Mr. Gagnon is saying is, you don't want everything to happen at the middle school level, and then when you get to the high school, it's, you know, you've already done it.
Right.
But, yeah, it's, it's, well, certainly, I couldn't, you know, none of us probably can attend for the most part.
I would be there, but I think no matter which graduation you do it, it always means something to the kids, whether they go from middle graduation to high school, I mean, it's a big thing.
It is.
For the chair, my concern is, as Liz mentioned, that it may be difficult for parents to get out, but by the time the end of the year rolls in, they've already used a couple personal hours here, a couple personal hours there, because we're trying to make it to all the community events, whether there's singing or usually it's not a sporting event or award ceremonies or this and that. I would like to, without doing a whole lot of research, just give us some pros and cons of the after-school or during-school ceremony. We're talking, that's, and that's right smack in the middle of the morning, so you're talking about a half a personal day for someone who's probably already, like myself, burned up a good portion of personal time trying to make it to other events.
Sure. Well, I think in terms of being of a parent of an eighth-grade student, I think a parent would save that time that they would need. So I do appreciate the challenge it presents, you know, for the school committee, but, you know, I really, I mean, I can look into it for you, but I don't think it's my place or our place to say to Mr. Gagnon, "It has to be a nighttime event." I think that it's an extremely successful event that happens during the day. So I'll ask him to give it some thought. If he's concerned that families aren't able to make it, then I think it's something to look at.
Can I just say?
Sure.
The superintendent is absolutely correct. We do not have the right to tell the principal that he should have a graduation at night or during the day or anything. That's his school, and even the superintendent isn't, isn't really supposed to be telling him those things. So I-
You're right about that, Liz, but it's just a concern for parents.
I'm not, I'm just saying is, if we're going to look at an assessment of this, we don't have the right to vote on whether or not it should be in the daytime or the nighttime.
Mm.
How's that?
Okay. The next item is transfers in terms of the business office, and they are in a slightly different format, but as I noted in this superintendent's memo, the reason for this, as we look to start to close out the year, or very quickly closing out the year, it is critical that we bring each line item to zero. So that's what really this does. So it is my recommendation that you approve the transfers as noted.
Can I get a motion to approve the transfer as noted?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Can't find my sheet, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foul?
None. The next item, the French River, as you know, we go in to bid with them, where they coordinate the bids, and it really does save us considerable dollars. It's with a number of school districts in the area that do so. So Cheryl Moran attended on behalf of the School Business Office, and it is my recommendation as noted here. Now, if you look on the, the bottom of page three has a, one recommended action that could, if you approve all of them, you could certainly do that, or you could separate each of them out, and those are on the top of page four. So the ones we're looking for your approval on this evening are for the copy paper bid that's being awarded to WB Mason, the computer supplies that's actually being awarded to various vendors, including GA Blanco, WB Mason, CAM, Cascade, CBR, and Standard Stationery, the approval of custodial supplies to various vendors, including ICPI, WB Mason, Fastenal, Supreme, Hilliard, Simplex, and Eastern Paper, and lastly, for general school supplies to various vendors, including WB Mason, Cascade, and Standard Stationery. And it is my recommendation that we, that you approve all of those.
Is it a motion to approve all, or would you prefer it don't sing?
I'd like to make a motion to approve all.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Foul, none.
Great, thank you. I've included for you in the packet a year-to-date Medicaid receipt. We just actually received the latest one just today, this having us anticipated and receiving $99,611.64. I'm uncertain at this point if we will get any additional funds in there, but if you remember, $112,000 was appropriated at town meeting, so I'll continue to keep you apprised on that, but wanted to share it with you this evening. The next item, the pro-pay update at the SBC meeting, actually, two invoices from Lamora Pagano were approved, and Mr. Kazanovich, who was trained at the same time Mr. Diddy had been trained, is in the process of processing those. Those invoices still being part of the feasibility study and schematic design, part of that original $600,000. And then finally, the year-to-date budget report dated May 29th, I should say, is included, and I would be happy to answer any questions. As you'll note in here, we are beginning to see zeros in some areas with 100% having been spent. These transfers will go a long way to bringing, excuse me, more to zero, and we'll continue to do that at the next couple of meetings.
If I may, can I just ask a question for the chair?
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Brunel, how are things going in the Fine Arts Department?
They're good.
Everything okay?
Yeah, they are. No, they're going, they're going well. Mr. Gray actually finishes in his current district on June 18th, so he's planning to come down a couple of days and get himself settled. We keep him apprised of any, we'll share within the French River information. Mrs. Moran and Mrs. Tarkott have been great. We meet at least twice a week and plan out some things. So they've, they've taken on some additional responsibilities, but they're both very capable, and things are going well.
All right, I'd like you just to pass on, I mean, I'm sure on behalf of the committee, we appreciate them taking the extra effort to help us through these times right now.
Will do. Thank you. And I believe at your seats, you have a copy of a letter. It's actually written, signed by Mr. Vincent McCarthy, the Director of the Division of Local Mandates. It's, oh, do I have, oh, okay, I have them all. Wayne has one.
I don't think so, I don't have one.
Okay. They're coming down now.
Okay.
So it's addressed to the members of the Auburn School Committee. Dear School Committee Members, Lori, Grivens, Scobie, Page, and Gibbry, State Auditor Suzanne Bump asked that I write to acknowledge receipt of your letter regarding the unfunded mandate determination ruling on Chapter 222 of the Acts of 2012, an act relative to students' access to educational services and exclusion. The auditor very much appreciates your comments. Please contact the Division of Local Mandates with any questions or concerns you may have on this or other matters. And this was in response to the letter that you had me draft, and you signed and sent, recognizing your appreciation for her, the efforts that she had done this, because now it's back in the legislature's hands, or it's been volleyed back to them in terms of funding that, that new act, which doesn't go into effect until July 1st of 2014.
Well, this begins acknowledgement, that's kind of nice.
It is. I was, I was impressed. I was impressed. And we do, that's all that I have. We do need an executive session as noted on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session per MGL, Chapter 38, Section 2183, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
And to return only to adjourn.
Return only to adjourn.
Mrs. Grivens?
Yes.
Mrs. Gibbry?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Okay. Say goodnight, honey.
Say goodnight.
Goodnight.
Goodnight, everyone.
Shut it off.